Lights not on.
Lights not on. Wait, did, was that thing off?
Dave.
It's on.
Okay, alright.
Good evening and welcome to Brookhaven Borough's January 3rd, 2022 reorganization meeting. I would like to call the meeting into order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the reward of which is hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pastor Ben Grenier from Real Church will now offer an opening prayer. Pastor Ben.
Would you bow your heads as we pray? Dear ye Father, we thank you for this, another opportunity just to come and ask for your blessing upon Brookhaven. Lord, we pray for this council who is assembled here today, Lord, to oversee Brookhaven. We pray for wisdom. We pray for grace. We pray that you would bless them as they make decisions to better this community. We also pray for our community of Brookhaven. We pray that you would bless it. We pray that each individual would stay healthy and would have the blessings of you in their household. We also ask that you would continue to just be the God you've always been, continue to show grace and favor on all. Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Ben. We will now begin the swearing in of our mayor and council members. The Honorable George Stone will begin with the swearing in of Denise Leslie, our mayor. Your Honor.
You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Denise Leslie.
I, Denise Leslie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of the office of Brookhaven Mayor.
Of the office of Brookhaven Mayor.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Sawicki, you want to go next?
Okay.
I, Janice Sowicki.
I, Janice Sowicki.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity. Congratulations. Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you George.
Thank you George.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, County of Delaware, loyalty oath. I, Terry Heller.
I, Terry Heller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Witness my hand and the seal, this third day of January 2022. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Sherry, give me a picture. Oh, come on guys. Next one I have is Mr. Gilroy. Ready? Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, County of Delaware, loyalty oath. I, Michael Gilroy.
I, Michael Gilroy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of this Commonwealth.
Of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of my office.
Duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Witness my hand and the official seal, this third day of January 2022. Congratulations.
Mr. Stone. Congratulations Mike.
And Mr. Pappas.
Hold on there.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, County of Delaware, loyalty oath. I, George Pappas.
I, George Pappas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And I will discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Witness my hand and the official seal, this third day of January 2022. Congratulations, George.
Sign your other George.
Oh, they're all in. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask for nominations for the council president. I would like to nominate Terry Heller.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. You're our president.
And there goes the phone.
President's being called.
This time I will entertain a nomination for council vice president.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Hector Vasquez.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any opposed? Any further nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Vice President. I'll entertain a nomination for President Pro Tem.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Donna Fuchs.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Fuchs. Alright, at this time, and bear with me, we have the nominations, or the appointment I should say, of most borough officials and personnel. So what I'm gonna do is, as I read the names and the position, if anyone shall have a nomination not, that I do not read, or another individual, please insert that nomination as I read. Otherwise, we will go in order. A motion will be required for each individual. I will not ask for objections or opinions as I go. If you object, insert yourself with an objection or an opinion, please. That will streamline the process. This time I'll entertain a motion to reappoint John J. Wilward Jr., Office Manager, Borough Secretary.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This time I will entertain a motion to reappoint Delilah McDade as Brookhaven Borough Treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank God you're back. At this time, congratulations, sir. At this time, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to reappoint Natalie Pino, Borough, Brookhaven Borough Clerk.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Pat Natalle, Brookhaven Borough Clerk.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This time I would entertain a motion to reappoint the great Joan Boyle for Planning Secretary.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. And the previous carries. At this time, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Charles J. Catania Jr., Brookhaven Borough Engineer.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to reappoint Charles J. Catania Jr. as the Commercial Building Inspector.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Robert Grant, Residential Building Inspector.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I skipped over the most important, the most important reappointment. Entertain a motion to reappoint John J. Wills Esquire as the Borough Brookhaven Solicitor.
I'll take the motion.
I didn't mean to skip you.
I'll second it.
You can smack him, Jay, it's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back, sir. Thank you for your service and all that you do. Sorry in advance for the year we're about to give. So that brings us to the Board of Health Inspector, right? I need a motion to reappoint Robert Grant as the Board of Health Inspector.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commercial food-related health inspector, Robert Grant.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Electrical inspector, John Grant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Plumbing inspector, Robert Grant.
I'll take it.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. I need a motion to reappoint the number one fire safety official, Robert Montella.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Note that the second position vacated by the resignation of Joe Bynum is to be determined. Do we have to motion to maintain that position as to be determined? Okay, we'll skip that then for now. We should have that within the next couple of months. Need a motion to reappoint Matthew Koppel as the Code Enforcement Officer for the Borough of Brookhaven.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to reappoint Steve Schultz as the Emergency Management Coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Need a motion to reappoint John J. Wilward Jr. as the Emergency Management Coordinator Deputy Coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Need a motion to reappoint Charles Leslie as Brookhaven Borough's Fire Marshal.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Need a motion to reappoint William Gavin as Brookhaven Borough's Zoning Officer.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Need a motion to reappoint Harry Swigum as the Building Services.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to reappoint Dr. Robert Crowell as the Brookhaven Borough Health Officer.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Need a motion to appoint David DePlicky, you're a junior, correct, Mr. DePlicky?
No.
Oh, you're not? I had junior down. Maybe there's a junior you're not aware of. I need a motion to appoint David DePlicky as the current vacancy board member.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now we move to the boards and commissions. Need a motion to appoint, we don't, we don't appoint the zoning board.
No, zoning does that.
Zoning does that, okay.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, no big deal. I'm like Ron Burgundy, I'll read whatever's in front of me. I stop myself there. We don't appoint any of these, correct?
Yeah, civil service we do.
Yeah.
No, I'm talking about zoning.
No, zoning we don't.
Yeah, no, just get right to civil service.
No.
No.
The alternate members would be appointed to the zoning board.
Just, just the alternates too, no? Okay. Alright, I need a motion to reappoint Gary Hastings as the zoning board, as a zoning board alternate.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And a motion to reappoint Patrick Thompson as a zoning hearing board alternate.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Need a motion to reappoint Anthony Pino Jr. to the civil, as a member of the Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Second.
I need a motion to reappoint Ronald Kearns to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
As the Chair of the Planning Commission, it should be. Second. Motion. We have a second?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. I need a motion to appoint Ron Jackson, Ronald Jackson, to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Recreation Committee, I need a motion to.
You have to do one whole.
Oh, okay. Christopher Gallagher should be removed from the list. I need a point, I need a motion to reappoint Glenn Holt to the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Christopher Gallagher moved out of the borough and is no longer on the board. Recreation Committee, I need a motion to reappoint Marianne Dougherty.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to reappoint Justin Howes, a member of the Recreation Committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last, I need a motion, motion to reappoint Pac, is that Wychik? Is that how you say that? Wychik? Well, it's Wychik tonight, to the Recreation Mission.
So moved.
I'll second.
What many of that should read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Number 11.
Alright, I need a motion to appoint the Voting Delegate to the Pennsylvania Association of Boroughs, nominating Janice Sawicki.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Committee assignments will be announced at the January 10 council meeting next Monday. If any, anyone from council or the mayor has comments, we'll start Mr. Pappas and move on down. Mr. Pappas, do you have anything to say?
I do not.
Caught him off guard.
Caught me off guard. I just want to say thank you to my supporters for bringing me back for another four-year term. Can't say it enough, it's a really good council. I'm happy to be here and I'm proud to serve. Thank you.
Mike is writing his speech, so I'll give it up. Mr. Gilroy, sir.
Raise a similar eyes, want to thank everyone who came out. Like you said, I've done it before and I've done it again. Anyone who came out and voted, I appreciate. I don't care if it was for me or anyone. Use your power, use your vote, boys, use your vote. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a, you know, a real nice holiday.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations to both of you again. Madam Mayor.
Yes, good evening. I just want to thank everybody, the people of the borough that voted me in to be the mayor. And I'm looking forward to the next four years, and I enjoyed this last year being the mayor. So, thank you, everybody.
Apparently you have a theme song somewhere.
I do.
Something was playing. Mr. Wills, you have the option of speaking, sir. You're on the clock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish to thank Borough Council for their vote of confidence in reappointing me as Borough Solicitor. My goal over the next two years is a simple one, to continue to provide high-quality legal services to the borough at the least possible cost to the taxpayer. Brookhaven is a very welcoming community, and I look forward to my continued service working with Borough Council, Mayor Leslie, Chief Vice, certainly Secretary Wilward, and all the borough employees. And with that, I wish everybody a Happy New Year, good health, and certainly stay safe in these very trying times.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your great services, Borough. It would be hard to really endure without you, believe it or not. It's the last time I'm going to say anything like that about you in public. We do, we appreciate your work, and councils do not operate very well without a perfectly qualified solicitor. So, you're the best fit for the borough. We're sure of that. I just want to, I'll be very quick, I want to thank my colleagues up here. It's, this job is incredibly tough for, not a lot of pay. You don't run for local council to get rich, we all know that. And you certainly don't serve as council president to get rich. You put a hell of a lot of time in. And without these, these gentlemen and gentleladies up here, we really, really could not function. It's the best council that we've ever had. I promised that two years ago. I, I stick by that. My promise came true. Even conservative Republicans like Janice Sawicki get along with us, so. But it's, I'm very proud of the work. We've made a very small handful of enemies who deserve it, but we've made hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of friends in the borough. They elected us back in as incumbents. It doesn't happen often where all four incumbents get reelected. I think it was the first in our history. I've been trying to check on that, but I think that's a testament to our relationship we have with the residents. And last, you cannot function as a government without great people like Charles Leslie and Robbie Montella and Chief Vice and Dave Evans in Public Works, the gentleman to my right here who does a great job of running the office, and someone's waving their arms behind the camera back there, I forget his name, Bob or something. Harry does a great job. They make the job a heck of a lot easier. It's a lot of stress, a lot of work, but they, they certainly, certainly keep the borough running smoothly. And again, thank you for your support. Happy New Year. John, you may speak if you wish, sir.
Thank you for reappointing me, I appreciate it.
We tried.
Thanks, sir. I'll try to give you the best 120% that I can, and anybody has any problems, let me know. Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you. I would just like to congratulate everyone. Not only those sitting up here, but those who work for the borough. It's not always easy. It's definitely not easy being up here. You know, we have to make ourselves accessible to all the residents, and the residents depend on us. So I think it's, you know, we're all up here for the right reasons. And I did want to congratulate all the borough employees, and I wanted to wish and hope that we all have a very healthy 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs. Thank you for your, your great work. Mr. Vice President, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say congratulations to all the freshly appointed officials and employees, and let's keep moving in this direction in 2022. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Heller?
I just have congratulations to everyone, from the office staff to everyone up here on council, and just wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Mrs. Sawicki?
Yes, I wanted to thank the borough residents for their confidence in reelecting me last November, and I will continue to serve the residents for the next four years to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Janice. Congratulations again. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment? Tom Dykes isn't here, so I assume that's a no. We have, we have you on the list after the public comment, sir. We're not going to forget about you, unless you have a public comment. Come on up, and then stay for the prayer. There you go.
Well, first off, I'd like to congratulate everybody. The last four years in the, in the borough has been very hectic, as the rest of the world's been with this pandemic. I think the borough's done the right thing in doing, making the right calls, so. And I want to congratulate everybody and wish you all a Happy New Year, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave.
Do you want me to go into the prayer?
You can go right on into your prayer, sir, unless there's anyone else who'd like to speak for public discussion.
Alright, this will be the closing.
Okay, public discussion is closed.
I have to read this.
You bringing up TikTok?
The screen erased the junk keeps coming up.
That's, that's alright.
But I don't have junk to say. I got some good stuff. Okay, I'm ready. God, we thank you for the men and women who serve our community in leadership roles and for their families. Please provide our leaders with reminders each day of why they decided to dedicate their time to public service and use that commitment to encourage them. Father, we are so grateful to be living in a democracy where many play a part in making sure the needs and desires of our community are met. As our leaders work together to find solutions to difficult problems, we ask that you guide them to speak respectfully and with humility to one another. Help them to show Christ-like love to those that interact with and be an advocate for their constituents and others. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
This is an afterthought, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
As the dawn breaks on a new year, let us give thanks for all we hold dear, our health, our family, our friends. Let us release our grudges, our anger, and our pains, for those who are nothing but finding chains. Let us live each day in the most loving ways, the God-conscious way. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you, Dave.
Before we, I asked for a motion to adjourn, I just want to say we will make a decision within the next couple of days of what we're going to do as far as in-person meetings go or if we're going to go back to Zoom temporarily. I would prefer to stay in person, but we'll see how that goes. Omicron's everywhere, and I mean everywhere. One example is 30% of the Sun Valley teaching staff has it, along with three of the four admins. I mean, that's everywhere. And who knows how many are asymptomatic. It's probably in this room. Some of us may have had it, we won't know. The good news is, it's mild, very mild. Everyone I know has recovered with it within a few days. So, that's good news. It could turn us from pandemic to endemic, actually, because it's moving so fast. And it's moving fast, incredibly fast. We're, we're at three times our daily pre-vaccine COVID peak in Delaware County per day. I think we are in the 500s. We're now at 11, 12, 13, 14, 1500. That's with tests being really not available, as far as those junk home tests go, anyway. And most of those aren't even reported as cases, so you might be looking at 5,000 per day. It doesn't care about your vaccines either. However, getting the vaccine and the booster, science says that it will prevent serious infection from, from all variants. So we still encourage you, I personally, I don't speak for the rest of the council, I encourage you to get the vaccines. But it's bad news now, it could be good news within the next It's bad news now, it could be good news within the next couple of weeks, depending on how it, what type of course it runs. So we will make that decision within the next couple of days. And I think most of you know, we posted on Facebook that we have shut down all building rentals with the exception of Basketball and Alcoholics Anonymous, their weekly meeting. And we're evaluating that on a month-to-month basis. So the goal is to reopen it as soon as possible. I personally like to see a Delaware County case count of around 100 per day to open up. But if we get anywhere between 1 and 200 with positive COVID ambulance transports, local transports, and the hospitals are less overwhelmed, less strained as they are now, then maybe we can make a decision to open. But we will make those decisions within the next couple of days. Nothing to panic about, again, it's a mild strain, but we still don't want to spread it all around the borough, so.[1764.64]